This looks good. Are you ready, team? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call the order of the regularly scheduled meeting for the Meridian Planning and Zoning Meeting for the date of November 7, 2019, and let's start with roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Our dean, our mics on?
All right, one moment.
I was like, I feel like I'm talking loudly for...
Done.
I can yell.
Volume. Done. Testing.
I don't have to talk so loudly. Nice.
There you go.
Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk, would you like to call the roll, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Seal?
Here.
Commissioner McCarville?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Here.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Here.
Absent are Commissioners Holland, Olson, and Perrow.
Thank you, ma'am. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We don't have any changes tonight, so can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as stated?
So moved?
Second.
Motion second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same. Motion passed. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have four items on the agenda to approve the minutes for October 17, 2019's Planning and Zoning Meeting, the October 24, 2019 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, and the findings of fact and conclusion of law for Adara Storage, file number H2019-0094, and the findings of fact and conclusion of law for Verosa Village North, H2019-0105. Anything that we need to pull out of the consent agenda? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion second to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to give you all a kind of an understanding of how we run our public meetings. We're going to open each application, and we will start with a staff report. The staff will report findings regarding how the item... And I can't get my notes, excuse me. And here's to our comprehensive plan and U4 development code with the staff's recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present their case for the approval of their application and respond to any staff comments. The applicant will have 15 minutes to make their case, and after the applicant has finished, we will open the floor to public testimony. There's a sign-up iPad in the back, so if you all would like to be heard tonight, make sure you sign up in the application you'd like to be heard from. If any individual is here for a HOA, and there's a group that will show their hands where they'll give up their time to this person to speak on the HOA's behalf, we'll give you an extra 10 minutes to speak for that group. After all testimony has been heard, the applicant will come back forward and we'll give them 10 minutes to respond to public testimony and close the discussion. And after that, we will close the public hearing, and we will deliberate to determine if we can make a recommendation or approve the application depending on what it is. So with that, we have a... First on the agenda, we have Goddard Creek Townhomes, which is H2019-0068. And we... This is a continued public hearing. Bill, and I want to make sure, because Commissioner Cassinelli wasn't here previously, we give a rundown. And for everybody in the audience, this is an application that was continued for... To ensure we had adequate public comment, because I think there were some folks who couldn't be here. So, Bill, if you can give a kind of a brief overview, so make sure that Commissioner Cassinelli's up to speed, and then we'll... If anyone's already spoken, we've asked that you don't come up, because we've already had that stuff on the record, and everybody was here except Commissioner Cassinelli. So I want to make sure we get everybody's public comment that wants to talk tonight. But, Bill, if you can start this off with a brief staff report, and we'll go from there for this application.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. As you stated, this was continued from the previous Planning and Zoning Commission for the purpose of additional public testimony. I'll run through the specifics of this application for you once again, and remind you of what I brought up at that hearing, and then also share with you some of the revisions that the applicants made to the plan based on those conditions in the staff report. So if you recall, this property is located on MacMillan Road and Goddard Creek Way, so it's the northwest corner. This property was annexed and zoned in 2002 as part of the Locksaw Falls development. As part of that approval, there was a development agreement that allowed for a use exception for office uses on this property in the R4 zoning district. In 2017, this property came back before this body with a comprehensive plan map amendment to change it from high-density residential and office to mixed-use community. At that time, there was also a concurrent conditional use permit for multifamily development on this particular site. As this property... Or as the project moved through the public hearing process, the applicant was concerned that council would not approve their request for multifamily on the site, and he subsequently withdrew that request for the multifamily component of this particular project. So currently, the comp plan amendment did move forward with approval, and there's currently storage facility being constructed along the west boundary of this property. The council approved the DA amendment to allow the storage facility, but wanted the site to remain R4 with the use exception for offices. So the applicant is here this evening, again, to discuss developing this site with 41 townhome units. Again, this is not multifamily. It is townhomes, which is by definition, single-family. The site consists of 20% of open space and three amenities, which consist of a dog park, a tot lot, and a covered picnic area. What makes this project unique is that it's served by public or private streets, because both ACHD and city staff do not want access to MacMillan Road, and there's an existing common lot along the east boundary that was platted with the Locksaw Falls development that prevents access to Goddard Creek other than West Cellway Rapids Lane to the north, which was provided cross-access to this property, and that is also a private street. So ACHD doesn't allow public streets off of private streets to have private streets going back into the public streets. So that's why the applicant is proposing private streets at this time. And in order to meet the requirements of code for private streets, they had to provide a Mew development, and that's why you see that central open space in between the units in the middle of the development. So one of our conditions was to have those units fronting on the Mew rather than having the rear of the units on that in order to meet UDC standards and support the private street application. So again, there's also alternative compliance for that. Our directors approved alternative compliance to allow the common drives off the private streets, and then also approve the private street application as well. So it does not take... Require any action of this particular body. If you recall, in my testimony last week or two weeks ago, I also mentioned to you that the public record, there was nine residents that testified in opposition. Primary concerns were traffic and parking in the area. In order to address that, and based on staff's recommendation, the applicant did provide guest parking within this facility, which isn't necessarily required by code, because the townhome units that you see here actually meet the code requirements for the parking pad and the two-car garages for each unit. So again, they heard staff's concerns. They were informed of some of the neighborhood opposition that we dealt with on that project back in 17, and that again was addressed with this application. So again, staff is recommending approval with those changes. And I just... Before I conclude my presentation, one of our other recommended changes was to relocate the common open space along MacMillan Road. So you can see here, the applicant provided a revised exhibit. The open space shifted to the east, and the two units that were on the east side have moved over next to these two units. So before, the open space was central in this location with two units on either side. Based on our recommendation, currently, the water and sewer stubs for this property are located in this area. So in order to facilitate the extension of those facilities, it was easier to have the applicant redesign their plan, relocate the open space, increase and connect two larger open spaces to make it more usable, and move this over here. Again, the applicant obliged staff in doing so. We believe that this plan is better suited this way, and again, staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the staff report. I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Cassinelli, do you have questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Bill, can you just explain to me, given that these... You mentioned that as townhomes, these are... These are single-family residences. So can you explain to me how we're getting that versus a multifamily? What the...
Yeah. Chair members of the Commission, it's very simple. In our code, there's definitions for each of the housing styles in our community. A multifamily development is three or more units on a single parcel. In this particular case, the applicant's plating the lot underneath each one of the dwelling units and having shared walls. So in this development, when you have three or more units attached, it's a townhome. When you have two units attached, it's single-family attached homes. So essentially, where you... The central units in the middle of the development, those would be considered townhomes, because it's more than three units. Each unit's on its individual lots. On the perimeter, we have the single-family attached, and then there's another townhome of three units here in the southeast corner. So that's really the definition. And then when we apply the parking standards for single-family dwellings, you have to have the two-car garage and the 20-by-20 parking pad in front of that. And that's the distinction here, where in a multifamily development, you'll have cover parking or surface parking. You don't necessarily need a garage spot. But when we're looking at townhome developments, single-family attached, single-family detached homes, duplexes, all of those types of housing require the garage requirement and the parking pad in front of them. And that's why they're more like a single-family than a multifamily development.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Thanks, Bill. Would the applicant like to come forward? Scott, do you want to come?
Thank you. Commissioned, Scott Noriyuki, Northside Management, 6810 Fairhill Place, Boise, Idaho, First of all, I want to thank Bill and staff, as well as the commission and your comments, as well as the neighborhood. We've held three neighborhood meetings and gleaned information from them, as well as you, as well as my client and staff. With that said, I've just got a couple of things I'm going to go over, so we're not being redundant. The distinction with townhouses, which is very, very critical, is these are not apartments. They are owner-occupied. They are parceled with literal soil dirt underneath them, which allows the underwriters' banks to approve mortgage loans, more easier than, say, a condo, if you will. So the product, which is very necessary in Meridian, is residential opportunities. We currently have here a lot of rental, and we have a lot of single-family detached. But that jump for a lot of kids, or young families, or single families, to transition from the rental ultimately to the single family is this step. So it's a step-up product, and it's verified only 5% of product in the city of Meridian currently fits within this need. It's a demand. With that, the only other thing I want you to key into that I asked Bill, and I don't know if he had a chance to put it forward within your staff report, I presented an update today to go into your staff report that addresses all of the traffic, as well as the school concerns. With that, I'll stand with... Or for any questions.
Questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Scott, you just mentioned... And I was going to ask you if you knew numbers, and then you threw out 5% that meet this criteria in the city. Where'd you get that from?
I am citing that from an article that was printed by the Idaho Statesman that... Bear with me here, I want to highlight it. That was dated late last year, that cited Caleb Hood, as well as another staff member. Bear with me here. I will submit this to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you have additional questions?
No.
Additional questions for the applicant? So, thanks, Mr. Noriyuki. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, Madam Clerk, do you have folks that have signed up to testify?
Mr. Chair, I show one, Janie Pullman, signed in, but did not indicate a wish to testify.
Is there anyone additional in the audience that would like to testify? Sir, do you want to come forward, certain gentleman in the blue shirt?
And I did sign in, so something between your computer and your iPad is...
And please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Bellamy. I live at 2464 West Wapoot Drive in Meridian, Idaho. Okay? So I want to testify. I attended these meetings back when the discussion was about the cellway apartments. You had all of us sign in at that point in time on paper. Everyone signed in against with one exception. That one exception happened to be an out-of-state developer from Spokane, Washington. Yet, this project was approved. It was approved on the little-known, high-density housing to be developed in the Locksaw Development at some point in time to be determined in the future. That was the catchphrase that got that product approved, okay? That time has come, and that time has gone. The 10 acres that Cellway sits on was zoned R4, and we now have 170 apartments there. Crime has gone through the roof. Our house values have tanked. Traffic has become a disaster. But yet now, you want to do the same thing on 5.03 acres by putting in 40 townhomes? Okay, by definition, they're not high-density. Common sense tells me it's very high-density. The intersection of Goddard Creek and MacMillan, if you look on your map that you guys have up on the boards up here, you can see that the traffic coming from the east, that is virtually a blind intersection. ACHD has the big white line that you're supposed to stop behind until you can pull out into clear traffic. You can't see the traffic. With the structures that are further to the east, no one stops short of that white line. I've seen as many as two cars in front of it, and it's going to cause a major problem. In parking, right now with Cellway, they can't park in the Cellway apartments. They're parking on all of the access streets. Appgar Creek for one. Those people that get frustrated with trying to get out of Goddard Creek onto MacMillan are now using Appgar Creek and north on Goddard Creek as alternative routes. Unfortunately, they're doing it at excessive speed and excessive traffic. Those streets were not built to handle that. We have already had one child killed on Goddard Creek. We don't need additional. Talk about the schools. My wife is a teacher in the Meridian District, has been for over 30 years, and I will tell you that the schools in the north of Meridian are overcrowded. I have a daughter attending the high school at Rocky Mountain. We have fairly new high school, and within, what, a year and a half, two years, they had portables, because they don't... Can't handle the student population. We have shoved so much in the north of Meridian, we can't handle anymore. Bad enough that our quality of housing has gone down in our home values, but now we're getting Costco, we're getting Winco, we got the Super Walmart. North of Meridian cannot take much more. And this 5.03 acres was zoned R4, four residents per acre. And there were a lot of us that looked at that when we purchased our homes there. This is governance of the people for the people by the people. Listen to your people. You didn't do it on the Cellway. The people didn't want it, y'all approved it. Please, listen to your people on this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I resolved our technical issues. I can see the list now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your patience, everyone. The next person I show signed in is Dan Arpatchell.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. My name is Dan Arpatchell. I live on 2371 West Appgar Creek Drive there in Meridian, so two houses right there from Goddard. I just wanted to take this time, and I appreciate the time, seeing as I wasn't here last time, to kind of state my case. I have a six-year-old, and I have another child that is due any day now. And we already, as he talked... You know, the last gentleman talked about, we've already had one kid killed on Goddard Creek. I am... I fear for my child because of the parking and the traffic issues, especially the speed. Like he said, they no longer go out Goddard Creek. They come across Appgar and go out further, go out further east. So I just like to take this time to ask you to please not change this to an R15 and keep it as an R4, to not exacerbate our parking problems, our traffic problems, our speed problems. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, the next person signed in is... Or Rod and Angie Ludlow. Okay, the next person is Penny Fisher.
Ma'am, thanks for being here. Yeah, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Penny Fisher. My address is 2382 West Appgar Creek. I reside in the home that is kitty-cornered directly from the proposed project. With that said, I am going to be affected by this directly. As it is right now, there is not a single day that goes by that I don't have parking of different people in front of my home, which means when I have friends that want to come and visit, they cannot even park in front of my own home. That's one of the reasons why I do oppose this. They're saying it's 5.03 acres of land, but when you look at it, they are actually only able to build on 4.62 acres of the land. So you're trying to shove 44... 42 units on 4.62 acres. One of the things of when we bought and purchased our home, we did look at the townhomes... Or not the townhomes, we looked at the area. We did look at the planning and zoning, and we looked at the master plan. And on the master plan, it had commercial, high-density, the cellway apartments, and homes. So our subdivision did allow for high-density, and cellway with 421 units did completely comply and take that. What they're asking us to do is, once again, change the zoning, because again, as they... Without being able to change it from an R4 to an R15, this is not feasible or pliable or... And without putting 41 units on it, it comes down to money. It would not be... If they didn't put the 41 units on there, it wouldn't be... Wouldn't make them any money. So I feel like for the developer, they don't care about the livability of the land. They don't care about the master plan of a Meridian that has been created for the livability of it. They don't care about the traffic. They're not in charge of the traffic. They don't care about the home values. They're not in charge of the home values. They don't care about the schools. They're not in charge of the home values. What they care about is purchasing and developing the plan for money. And so with me being right there, I've talked to many, many people who are concerned about the traffic. They are concerned about crime. They are concerned about the livability going down. So what I ask for you guys to consider is, I know that you guys are not in charge of all of that, but you are in charge of the livability and sustaining and keeping our master plan. So I'm asking you to, once again, stick to the master plan and do not change it. Keep it at the R4, and do not change it to the R15. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seth Patchell?
I apologize. I must have signed in incorrectly. I didn't mean to speak.
You can yield your turn. It's fine. Noah Patchell, same?
Same, yeah.
That's it for testimony.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this application in the audience? Any questions for staff before I get a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, an application... Yeah, sorry, Scott. Do you want to come back up and talk? Yes, the applicant likes to come forward and close the discussion, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our good chair isn't here, because she won an election yesterday, so we're very happy for her, but I'm trying to take over.
Fair enough. I get it. Scott Noriyuki, Northside Management, 6810 Fairhill Place, Boise, Idaho, 83714. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the testimony from the neighbors. I understand the concerns. I want to go over a couple of things. I wrote them down, so I'll try to be concise and quick. Number one, this area has changed from the original development at the onset years and years ago, the master plan. And of course, this entire portion of the city has morphed, and it's changed. So I want to point that out. And over the years, there have been multiple zone changes and development agreement modifications. What we're doing is we're adjusting to market demand, the needs of the city, and what's appropriate. That said, I want to make clarification that I'm not from Spokane. I'm not the original developer. I have nothing to do with all the original applications. We are coming forward with what we believe is a good idea. We're born and raised Idaho, period. Just saying that. Property values are not at risk. In fact, we're coming in with a very high-end product from our standpoint. It's going to be quality-built. It's not derogatory. It's not rental. It's not cheap. Traffic studies, I hope each of you had a chance to see what I submitted today as far as the calculations, that prove out, per ACHD and national standards and studies and experts, that prove out these 41... The staff report's incorrect, stating 44. There's actually 41 townhouses proposed. It proves out that the trip capture on a daily basis would be significantly lower than light office. So from a traffic standpoint, we're actually less of an impact. Furthermore, I hope you... And you can see the links and the research points that we have that prove this out. Furthermore, from a school standpoint, I'm a parent, and I get that. I mean, growing pains in the city of Meridian, what are we, one of the fastest-growing areas in the United States? I've spoke with the vice president of the school district. I have an understanding, and I gave you links of the school, the new schools that are approved to be built, the schools that are going to be expanded by 2020, which is in or about the same time that we would actually complete construction. And per their calculations and census data, we're going to add 34, 35 kids of school age. Very small. With that said, I'll stand for questions.
Any additional questions for the applicant? And thank you for reminding me. I appreciate it greatly. Make sure you got to close. With that, I get a motion to close the public hearing on H2019-0068.
So moved? Second?
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same. My fellow commissioners, the application is currently presently before you. Commissioner Cassinelli, go right ahead.
I never reviewed the minutes from the last one. Did you guys have any debate?
We talked about it a little bit on certain components of it, moving some components around and kind of where the staff had gone. And talked about the product mix in the city. We talked about that, too. But there wasn't a great deal of that. We wanted to... I think we had a conversation about continuing this before that, and so we didn't get deep into it.
Yeah. I have a couple of things. Bill, I have a question for you. I don't know. Going back to... I know when we reviewed that last... The multifamily back in 2017, we talked about the cellway apartments a lot. Was that... And I don't know if you recall from that, was the cellway apartments, were those originally supposed to be on this land, and they got pushed to where they... They got pushed back to where they are now? Do you recall?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, no, this was always the location slated for the cellway apartments, and it was the... This entire frontage was always... Was going to be office. That's what the original plan was, and that's... That's why when they came through with their comp plan amendment two years ago, and we wanted to try to... You know, as this commission knows, with mixed-use community, we try to at least get to distinct land use. We want three distinct land uses on the particular property. In this particular case, just to the west of this site is Bridge Tower Development that has some vacant office lots and some vacant commercial at the corner of Tim Mile and MacMillan. And so we used that as a barometer, saying, here's the commercial component, we're going to have storage as the other component, and then the multifamily was the third component to kind of tie in and blend in with that mixed-use comp plans change that we were processing back in 17. But I worked on the cellway project when I first started with the city, and my recollection is that it was always part of a PUD, approved as part of that PUD for 171 units, and it was zoned R4. The city actually recommended a condition... was zoned R4. The city actually recommended a condition of approval that they rezone that from R4 to R40, and the council denied the rezone. And that's why it remains R4 today with the 171 units on it. The reason why the apartments went forward and the council couldn't necessarily deny the project based on the public testimony that they have, the gentleman was up here testifying is because it was entitled with the PUD, and there was no mechanism for the council to deny it. It was already essentially approved with the PUD process. All that we were doing at that time was making sure that it integrated with the neighborhood. And those were the findings that the city made, and that's why the apartment got built. But in relationship to this project, right now it's zoned R4, but the DA says that they are allowed to do office uses. That's currently how it's structured in today's world. And as I mentioned to you in my presentation, that's what the council supported two years ago. They thought office was a better use for this. And so they essentially denied the rezone for this piece, too. It was R15. It was R40. They were proposing, I think, 82 units. They watered it down to, commission had concerns with the multifamily, that it was going to be too dense, not enough open space, parking concerns with that project. So you guys continued it out. They lost units, brought in more amenities, more open space with that multifamily project. And you guys had recommended approval, but again, at the time that it got up to council, just felt office was better. And so the applicant elected just withdraw their application rather than take their chances with the denial. And ultimately, it was, got withdrawn, and office uses stayed on the site.
Was that in 18? Because I know in 17, we recommended for denial on it.
Well, I believe you continued it out for the apartments to get ratifications, but then you forwarded it on, if I recall. But I don't know if you actually partially denied it.
Seen it three times. I know we recommended denial once, recommended approval once, and then this is the third time we've seen it, if that's what I recall.
I didn't look at, I looked at the one, I was reading through the one that was, that we recommended for denial. And then the other one I thought was just for the storage unit.
I think we split it up, and then sent one on and kept one not going forward or something. I think.
I think the last one in 17 was the one that was recommended for denial. That's what I remember.
Partial approval, partial denial.
I think there was something that was.
There was two, two CUPs that went concurrent with that complant change. One was the apartments, the other was the storage. Well, I stand corrected. If you guys recommended denial on it rather than approval, then I stand corrected, and you went forward with a partial denial on the multifamily component. You felt it was too dense.
Yeah, I think that's what happened, is we split it in half.
Well, my mic's still on. I'll go ahead.
Go right ahead, sir.
Make my comments. I like the product. I like, I think there is a need. We've got, I mean, multifamily as far as apartments have been exploding and going up all over, but there aren't, I don't think there's a lot of, now that, the number that Scott put up, that 5% number, had a mix of, it was multifamily included, townhouses. But I don't, I'm just trying to picture in my mind, townhouses around Meridian. And I don't think there's a lot. And I know for, you know, for young, for young families, it's definitely a need. And it's a, we haven't needed it in the past because single-family homes in Meridian were always so cheap.
Expensive, yeah.
But now they've, now they're kind of out of control. So townhouses are a great way for, you know, somebody starting out to, to own and do that. So I really like that. My issues with this, looking back on what I saw and what I recall, is we denied the residential portion of that based upon a lot of factors, density being one, changing of the DA, the original DA for Locks Falls, included the 171 multifamily, and that's what was put in with, with the cellway apartments. And now we're looking to change it up and add more residential units. And I know if I was, if I was living in there, I wouldn't be happy. If I bought, then that, and that DA is, is what it is. Now I'm trying to go back and change it later. I, you know, I don't like, I just, I don't like it. I don't like it from that standpoint, that we're trying to change the DA for that. I know we changed the zoning of it to get, to get the, the storage in there. And when you look at the mixed-use community and having three, three different types of usage, I know that, I think cellway apartments are separate, and that's high-density, but really, you kind of include it in that little pocket there as far as being mixed-use community. So there's your high-density residential for them you see. You've got the storage unit, which is one aspect. Now you're looking for another. And that's why I think, I mean, to me, the office, to keep it as, you know, to have it go as office would be a good use of that land. The other issue I have with this is that we're looking at two steps up, not from R4 to R8, but we're going, we're going all the way up to R15. So we're looking for, for two-step up. And it's complicated piece, because obviously, R15 fits in the MUC. And, and this one doesn't have the, if you look at it as an MUC, it doesn't have the residential component. But the cellway, to me, is that residential, high-density component of an MUC, even though I don't think the cellway, that's not in this, that parcel's not part of the MUC. So it's kind of confusing that. So the way I stand, I like the, I like the project from what I see of it. And I think there's a need. I just messing with it, you know, changing the DA when people, they bought in Locks of Falls with the understanding of what that was going to be. And then, you know, taking two steps up in this, if we're looking at it like that. So those are my issues with it. Those are my concerns. As, as a result, I would personally probably vote to deny, based on those.
So can I ask a quick question? So, and I'll ask you, and then Bill, too. Everything that is being submitted in this application goes with the DA, correct? So they, they can't come back and change it, but that's, without coming to us again. So just, I mean, I'm making sure that is an understanding. So we're going to, to maintain the MUC if this was something we moved forward with or not. But the DA, it would change to have this product on it, elevations set up. So it's not that there's, somebody can come back and just go build R15 and increase the density later on. They'd have to come back to us again. So I'm just making sure that's clear. Because it goes, this, everything that is in this package goes in the DA. So they have to build this product, or come back and ask for something to change.
This product is in the DA?
It would have to be. It goes with it.
We would have to change, we'd have to, they're looking to amend the DA.
Bill, you want to clarify, just to make sure we're all on the same page?
I'm looking at the staff report. Give me a few minutes here.
Because that's, that's my understanding, was part of the application was to amend the.
Yeah, no, I agree. And all this, this, the plat and the elevations and what they're proposing would go into that modification. So if they were going to do something different that was even denser, they would have to come back and ask again.
Mr. Chair, I think, Bill, also, as part of the comments on last meeting with this was, even though it's R15 pretty much for the setbacks, it's just a hair over, all right, the, yeah, it's, the density is like nine, nine-point something. I mean, it's not, you know, pushing the limits of the R15. It's just that for the setbacks of the properties, but.
So commissioners, looking through the development agreement, modification portion of the staff report, yes, right now, just to clarify, the density is 8.87 dwelling units to the acre, which is slightly above the medium-density residential designation. But this is mixed-use community, where we anticipate densities between 6 and 15 dwelling units to the acre. So it even falls in between the midpoint of that range as anticipated by the comprehensive plan and the current comprehensive plan designation. And then, yes, the new DA, if you will, or the modified DA, will, says that the applicant shall comply with the site plan, elevations, open space, all of the things that you see in this plan is what's tied to the property, if council approves it the way it's being presented this evening. Again, you don't, you're not an acting body on the DA modification. That's something that purview of the council, but that's, that's recommendation in the staff report, that there's strict adherence to the plan that you're seeing this evening, along with the elevations and that density. So yes, if changes were, if this didn't move forward, let's say they get approval through the council, and the DA gets executed, and this is the plan on the books. Yes, if they wanted to change it, they're coming either before council or this body, depending on what other applications they would be proposing.
Thank you, sir. Just want to make sure that was clear in everybody's mind, too. Additional thoughts, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seal.
Just in looking at it and reading through the comments that are, I mean, Mr. Noriyaki's response for the public comments piece of it, I mean, there's some compare and contrast in here as far as the, you know, putting in what's proposed versus putting in office space essentially, and as far as the, the number of trips each day and everything. And it's very well thought out, and it's very well presented. But I think, in my mind, the difference between them is going to be, you're going to have everybody leaving at the same time, everybody coming back at the same time. And with a retail, office-type space, not necessarily a restaurant or something, you're going to have people that are going to be coming in and out during different parts of the day, not necessarily rush hour. I mean, most people don't set their appointments up to be somewhere at 8 o'clock in the morning. So I think that's an important distinction. The other thing, and I mean, we've talked about it before, is just, the report that we got from the West Ada School District shows that every school that's, every school that the, that the children in this should go to is overcrowded, and they won't go to it. They will be bussed somewhere else. So if it were my kid, I wouldn't want him to be bussed somewhere else. I want him to go to the school that's across the street, down the road, whatever that looks like, you know, the closer the better, essentially. And I mean, that's because you want your kids to play with kids that they go to school, school with, not come home to a, you know, a subdivision of strangers, essentially. So, I mean, those are the two things that I'm looking at. The other part is ACHD report actually shows that, I mean, essentially, those, not only McMillan, but the streets there are, I mean, they're at capacity or more, according to two-plus-year-old data. So that's, you know, and I do drive by this area all the time. So that, that portion of McMillan is horrible, to say the least. I mean, anybody that's willing to take a bike out on that portion of McMillan is taking their life into their own hands for sure. So, you know, to try to put more people, more kids, and everything into that is going to be, I don't think it would be a very good use for it. And the other part that I want to bring up, as far as the office space piece of it, people are going to be coming in and out of that essentially by Google or by direction. So I would imagine the offices in that area are going to instruct them to come in and out on McMillan. Now, whether or not they're going to go out Apgar, and they're going to go all the way out to Linder, that's, you know, nobody knows. I'm sure once people that would frequent those places of business figure that out, they're going to do the same thing that a lot of the residents are doing. And that's, they're going to go straight out to Linder, and they're going to go out from there. Just because you can't get onto McMillan from there in the mornings, it's probably nearly impossible with the amount of people that they have going in and out. You know, those things considered, I'm, I'm definitely looking at this for a denial.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCarville.
Yeah, I'm really torn with this, because I really like the product, and I love that they have come with 20% open space, plus additional parking, plus, 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 plus. But I'm recalling our original denial on any, really, anything over the R4 on this piece was just because of the traffic trying to get out of there on that corner, and that it's already backed up. I just, I don't know. I think, I think the office may be the better way to go on this. But I do, I love the concept. I just, I wish it was somewhere else, just because of the already high-density behind it, the issues that already exist there.
Well, I'll add my two cents. I love the product. I think there's a need for it in Meridian. I, I think they did an exceptional job of laying this out. I don't think, just for informational purposes, I don't think they're going to give us access onto McMillan. I think that's going to be emergency-only forever. I don't think you're ever getting access to McMillan, ever. So whatever goes in there is going to have to use Cellway Rapids, or whatever they're going to, because they can't curb-cut on that island way on Goddard Creek. So this is going to be a layout of, something is going to go onto that Cellway Creek line. So that's just something, food for thought for everybody. I, this piece of property, we've struggled with for a long time. I think the DA history is pretty extensive on, if I remember correctly, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a component of how much high-density was supposed to be on the PUD, and it was partially taken down, but not the whole thing, but I don't recall how much of it. So that was something I came, I remember having a conversation about it at our last meeting. I think we've seen this thing three times. So I think this is the best rendition I've seen it, but it's still back to the residential piece, and if it fits there. So I'm struggling, because I do know that there's a need for this product in the city. If this is the right spot or not, I don't know. But there's, I'm struggling.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCarville.
The other thought that just ran through my head is if this was something else other than, I know, I can see where there's plenty of parking within this little corridor for what's there, but we already have excessive overflow and people looking.
Yep, looking for places to park.
And if it was a regular street or office or something, then it might be an opportunity for some of that overflow parking that's already congesting Goddard Creek to be.
Oh, sure. Put somebody's, the parking on somebody else's problem.
I think we've learned since then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're definitely getting better at it.
Hopefully.
Mr. Jerome.
Mr. Seal.
I also, I'd like to, I mean, I didn't say anything about the positives about this, and that is that if you took this, if you could cherry-pick this and put it into a, to a spot that's more appropriate, I would be all over it. I mean, I have, myself, I have kids that absolutely need this type of housing in Meridian. So, I mean, you know, I know people personally that would benefit from having this kind of, this kind of product available to them. And it is very well thought out, and it's very well laid out. I have no issues with anything that they've done on that. It's just, you know, the, how appropriate is it for this specific area? That's what I struggle with.
So I, and I'm understanding of the certainty of somewhat of zoning, and we've done this because of that several times. So there is some thought there. And I understand the Goddard Creek neighborhood, they have had a young kid get killed on a bike not very long ago. So that is very fresh, and we need to take that into account. So, so thoughts, additional? You have? I can't make motions, because I'm.
Yeah, I would be happy to move forward with the motion if.
Any other comments from other commissioners before?
Ready?
I just, just kind of a general comment. We, we talk about these infill projects all the time, and they're tough. And I know there was, there was one up on Linder across from the fire station there on the backside of Paramount, that the first go-around, I remember we denied it, and it was, it was multifamily. And they came back with a product that the neighbors were happy with. It fit, it worked, it's going in right now. It's developing. There's a Montessori school, and there's some other things in there. So I, you know, not just office, it doesn't just have to be, you know, like a dentist office or CPA office or something. But there, there, there's a need for a lot of those types of things. It aren't your standard, you know, Walgreens on the corner, you know, fast food or something like that. There's, there's, there are definitely other, I think other needs in, in, in Meridian that could fit in that spot. I think this would, and I don't know what the, you know, what the zoning is down at, at the corner. And I think Jackson's or Fast Age building another spot down there on the corner, what's going in. But this, that's a lot of land down there, too. This is a, a project that I think could, would be wonderful for something like that. So those are just some thoughts there. Commissioner McCarville, were you going to take a stab?
Sure. After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend denial to the city council, file number H-2019-0068, as presented during the hearing of November 7th, 2019, for the following reasons, that it should. 7th, 2019, for the following reasons, that it should remain as suggested with the officer R4 because of traffic concerns.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to recommend denial of H-2019-0068 for the hearing date of November 7th, 2019. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same. Motion passes. Bill, do you want to move on to H-2019-0098, 840 East Eustick Road, and Mr. Parsons will let you take over, sir.
Perfect, thank you. Next item on the agenda is 840 East Eustick Road. This is an annexation and zoning request. The site consists of 2.29 acres of land, zoned RUT in Ada County, and again, it's located at 840 East Eustick Road, and that's midway between Meridian and Locust Grove on the north side of Eustick Road. The property is surrounded by a single-family residential, so an R1 and RUT in Ada County. But they, there is one property just on the west boundary that is currently, it's not showing up in this map, but it was recently annexed in as part of the 750 East Eustick property. So there is an R4 property right adjacent to this piece that was approved last year with a development agreement. The site is currently developed with an existing home. With the widening of that road project back in, a few years ago, the well for this property was wiped out with that project, and so as part of that roadway project, the previous owner entered into an agreement with the city to, that allowed them to hook up to city services outside of our boundary, and they would, once they were contiguous, they would annex in. So that's really what they're doing tonight, is just, there is no development proposed, so staff is not recommending a development agreement as part of the annexation request. But we are recommending, rather than annexing the property in with the R4 zoning district, we are recommending that they come in with the R2 zone, which is also consistent with the low-density residential designation. Really, the primary differences between the two zoning districts is, one, R4 are smaller lots with less street frontage, so you're looking at 60 feet of street frontage in an 8,000-square-foot lot in the R4 zone. In the R2 zone, you need 80 feet of street frontage, and a minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. We did run this idea past the applicant, and they are amenable to staff's recommended change in having this come in with an R2 zoning designation without entering into a development agreement. Now, if the, this body wants the app, or wants staff to enter into a DA, certainly that's within your purview. If you are inclined to do that and support the R4 zone, then we would ask you to continue this out, allow time, staff some time to craft those DA provisions and bring those back to you for your consideration. Staff has not received any written testimony on this application. The applicant, again, is in agreement with the R2 zone in lieu of the R4 zone. We are recommending approval with the comments in the staff report. We don't condition annexations, they are, unless we do that through a development agreement. Again, we are not recommending that. So I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Castelli?
Because I just want to be here all night.
Do that. Well, where to go?
Bill, with the, assuming the new comprehensive plan is adopted coming up next month, is that going to allow residential step-ups?
Chairman, members of the commission, it is not. That provision of the comprehensive plan will be removed as part of the update.
Okay, that's what I thought. So basically, the way this is, the way this one's looking at now, I mean, if we, if we, if it's approved as R2, it's, it's staying R2.
If it comes in as R2 and they want to subdivide it, they can do that as long as they comply with the R2 zoning districts. If they want to do an R4 zone in the future, then whatever they do would have to comply with the R4 standards and be, provide densities of three or less units to the acre, consistent with the LDR designation.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for staff?
Or amend the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Well, that's, I had the exact same, when we were talking earlier, because I had the same, the potential for that area to redevelop is pretty high, and if R4 has been brought in next door. So something to think about as we go forward. But any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Am I required to?
Probably just come say hi. Just, and then you can agree with staff on the record, so just state your name and your address for the record, sir.
Scott Lamb, 1217 East Lone Creek Drive, Eagle. And, yeah, Bill and the staff have been great to work with. We have no plans to develop the property. We've just been renovating the old farmhouse that's there, and that's all we're doing.
And Mr. Lamb, do you have a preference on the R2 or R4, if you're going to ever do a redevelopment, or?
No, we don't plan on redeveloping. The staff was kind enough to reach out and ask my opinion on that, and pretty much, I don't really care. I mean, I, if I'm going to have to pay a development, for a development agreement anyway, I would prefer the R4. But if not, I'm all for saving the 300 bucks.
Understood. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Mr. Lamb, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
We greatly appreciate it. Adam Clerk, is there anyone to testify on this application?
Mr. Chair, if my technology serves me properly, there is nobody signed up for this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to testify on this application? Seeing none, Mr. Lamb, do you need to say anything additional? Okay. Can I get a motion to close a public hearing on H-2019-0098?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Castelli.
Should I just move to make a motion?
I think you should.
That'd be good.
Okay. After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to City Council File Number H-2019-0098 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of November 7th, 2019.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a third to approve, or to recommend approval of File Number H-2019-0098. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Lamb. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is the Waterwalk application, H-2019-0111, and we will start with the staff report. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Next item is the Waterwalk rezone. Site consists of 5.18 acres of land, currently zoned IL in the city, and it's located on the west side of North Eagle Road and east side of North Olson Avenue, just north of East Franklin Road. To the north and west, there's industrial properties zoned IL. South is vacant undeveloped commercial properties, zoned CG, and to the east, you have Eagle Road, State Highway 55, and retail RC railway storage, zoned CG. This property was annexed in 1997 with a requirement of a DA. However, a DA was never executed with the annexation. The current comprehensive plan designation for this property is commercial, and the requested CG zone is consistent with that designation. The property is currently vacant at this time. The applicant did provide a conceptual development plan for this particular property that shows two extended stay hotels on the site. If you read through the staff report, you had noted that there's some deficiencies on the site plan regarding fire department access and then the amount of parking that's required by code. So staff's recommendation is that we not tie this development agreement to the development agreement at this time, just because the applicant could work through staff on some of those challenges as they go through the CCC and design review process. Would also mention to you, because of the component of this type of use, we also want to be, want to say, as a tenor, as to what other complementary uses could go with this restaurant, or this hotel site. Certainly, with this type of use, you could get retail, office, maybe a restaurant to be a good partner with this use. So through the development agreement process, or through the provisions that we're proposing, we have limited the use of the site to those four specific uses. And if the applicant wanted to do anything other than those uses on the site, they would have to come back, modify that DA with the council, and bring forth a new concept plan to show how this could develop with other uses than what we're contemplating currently. Right now, we're, we've limited to, and I'll read Son's notes here, so we're limited to office, hotel, retail, and restaurant uses is currently how we're proposing it in the DA modification, or the new DA. The applicant was informed of that information, and they were in agreement with the staff report. So again, staff is not holding the applicant to these, to this concept plan, but we are supportive of the rezone to allow this use to occur on the property. We find that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we ask for your approval tonight and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward? Sir, thank you for being here. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Dustin Holt, 211 East Broadway, Salt Lake City, Utah. And if I call you Madam Chair, it's because I prepared my comments on Monday, so.
That's, that works.
Congratulations to Commissioner Peralta, but I apologize if I call you Madam Chair. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much for your time this evening. In my role in, at DB Urban, Dusty Baker Communities, I'm before bodies like yours at least monthly and a lot of times, several times a month. So even though I'm not here from Meridian, thank you for your service. I think I have a glimpse of what it entails to do what you do, so thank you very much. I also wanted to publicly thank Sonia. Sonia, the planner, couldn't be here tonight. I met Bill at my first visit. I've been working with Sonia on this for close to a year now, so we did want to make certain that we got certain things right, and I appreciate her time. I do not want you to hold us to this site plan. There are things that we need to work through. I was on the phone with Waterwalk as recently as yesterday on their prototype, and their prototype may go to one building. So I know there are things that we're going to work through, and I'll mention a couple other things, but I just wanted to, wanted to thank Sonia publicly. I also want to thank Brad Miller, who's here, and the Van Acker family. They've been wonderful to work with, and now Brad with the Alder Adler Industries and the property and their continued support. So we are, we're not only acquiring this five acres, we're acquiring the two acres south of this that fronts onto Franklin. So that's another reason in our conversations with Sonia of delaying the DA, is we'd like to work through a comprehensive site plan with some of the uses that Bill mentioned in conjunction with the hotel. So the application request for you tonight is a rezone. It's a rezone to know with certainty that those four uses specifically that Bill mentioned would work, that we can work through access, we can work through parking, we can work through those uses really comprehensively on this seven-plus-acre site. As Bill mentioned, the general plan calls for this area to be commercial, so we think it's something that complies with that request. We've read the staff report. I think the only other comment that I would make, we are in full support of the staff report and appreciate what Sonia's done. The only other comment is, as we, as we come back and work through this, we're hopeful that at a minimum, we might be able to explore a ride-in, ride-out onto Franklin. We know we'll never get a full intersection. We know that our main ingress egress will be off Olson. We know we'll never do anything on Eagle, but certainly exploring at least a ride-in, ride-out just for circulation pattern and flow is something that we would like to do, so we wanted to note that on the record. We clearly understand the next steps would be to finalize that site plan and then work through a DA and have that document recorded. So if there's, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, we appreciate your time this evening and would respectfully request the forwarding of a positive recommendation.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So there's some significant topography on that piece of property, at least to the north, or to your south, and is there, are you thinking you're going to combine this into one project eventually, or two different separate site plans?
No, I think it would, will ultimately always be two different site plans, two different parcels because of topography, but certainly thinking through really any connection as far as cross-access from this site to something to the south really needs to happen to the west end there, close to Olson, where the topography is shallower. So thinking through that, Matt Munger of WHP is here, and they've been wonderful to work with. I should also thank him. But thinking through all of that is something that we want to do as a whole, holistically.
That works. Thank you very much. Any additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for this application, ma'am?
Mr. Chair, I show Brad Miller.
Mr. Miller, do you want to testify? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here that would like to testify on this application? Seeing none. Any other questions for staff before we move to close the public hearing? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Or would you like to say anything additional, sir? Anybody else to say? Okay. Jump in the gun.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Castelli.
I move we close a public hearing on item 4C, Waterwalk, H-2019-0111.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing on H-2019-0111. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same. Thank you very much.
I, I think it fits. And, I mean, if we're, all's we're doing is, is the rezone. I'm all for it.
I, I'm in agreement. I think there's, it's time for that corner to be something different, and it's been kind of interesting, different group of parcels there for a long time, and I think Brad's work in the past to the north has been great. This would be a good thing to clean up for the city, I think. So I'm in support.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCarville.
Yeah, I agree. This is no longer an industrial corner. Changing it to the CG makes perfect sense, and a hotel in that corner, I think, is fabulous. As long as they're in agreement, which they seem to be with everything in the staff report, I don't see a problem with it.
And they realize they're not getting access to Eagle Road, which is always an easy thing.
Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Basically the same comments. It's nice to actually see a conceptual plan be provided as part of this and to understand the, how the southern piece of property is going to tie into there. So just seeing what may conceptually go into there is actually a nice piece to go in there. With that, I'll, I can make a motion on this one.
I think, a motion's always in order.
Okay. After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval of City Council File Number H-2019-0111 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of November 7th, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to recommend approval of H-2019-0111, the Waterwalk rezone. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on down the agenda. Next, we will open the public hearing on application H-2019-0097, the Percy Subdivision, and we'll start with the staff report. Mr. Parsons.
Chairman, members of the commission, next item is Percy Subdivision. There's a slew of concurrent applications with this, one of which we've never done before, which is de-annexation of a sliver of property, and as I get into my presentation, I'll elaborate a little bit more as to why we're de-annexing that piece of property. So we're looking at a de-annexation, a rezone of 30.02 acres of land from the R4 zone to the R8 zone, and then a Plymouth plaque consisting of 113 single-family building lots and 11 common lots and 28.51 acres in the proposed R8 zone, and then also a development agreement modification to tie the applicant to the proposed development plan that he's showing, that we're discussing this evening. So this property, history on this property was annexed in 2015 as part of the South Meridian annexation. At that time, the applicant was granted R4 zoning with a development agreement. As part of that development agreement, the applicant was granted permission to proceed with a rezone of this property and a DA modification at no cost to them in anticipation of this potentially redeveloping other than R4. That was, again, contemplated in that DA, and that's why the applicant's pursuing the R8 zone this evening, because that was the intent behind the recorded development agreement. So the reason why, but also as part of that, so again, the city recognized that it would redevelop, come in with a subdivision, consistent with the medium-density and low-density designation on this particular property. If you had a chance to read my staff report, there was comments in there that this property does have dual designations on it. It has low-density, it's primarily low-density, there's medium-density along the north boundary, and then predominantly it's low-density residential over the majority of it. As this body knows, the comprehensive plan and those land use designations aren't parcel-specific, and so looking at the proposed density for this project, which is slightly above the low-density standards, it's at 3.96 dwelling units to the acre, and because there is a medium designation on this property along with the low-density residential designation. medium designation on this property along with the low-density residential designation, staff didn't feel it was appropriate for the applicant to request a step-up, and we find that the density that's proposed this evening is consistent with the dual designation on this particular property. Now, the purpose for the de-annexation of the property is to facilitate the roadway, the access to Meridian Road. The city, ITD and ACHD, we all worked together on a master street map and we have policies that restrict access to Meridian Road because of the mobility nature of it and the high volumes of traffic. In this particular case, ITD was adamant that this roadway connect at the mid-mile between Amity and Lake Hazel, and that only way that could happen is that the developer could work with the adjacent neighbor to the south and then that neighbor that is also farther to the south in order to execute the necessary easements to dedicate to ACHD in order to construct an off-site portion of that roadway. And if you can see my cursor here, that's really, this is the frontage that we're talking about, so this is the off-site portion to get the connection to Meridian Road, thereby along the north boundary of this property. The applicant will have to go through the county, once they get through the de-annexation process with the city, go to the county and re-establish a zone for this particular property, so the county has a rezone process as well to reassign it the RUT designation so that this property owner can do a property boundary adjustment and then consolidate this sliver in with his property to make him whole and keep him consistent with the RT, RUT zoning in the county. The applicant shared an email with me today. He's already conducted a pre-application with the county, so he's aware of what the requirements are going forward with reverting that back to A8 County zoning. Now, the rezone, the exhibit on the right-hand side is the boundary of the rezone, which again is 28, approximately 29 acres, and again, it's currently zone R4 and applicant's proposing R8 zoning. So here is the, again, the plumeray plat and the landscape plan before you this evening. Again, the plat consists of 113 single-family detached lots. The applicant is proposing to develop the site in two phases. As of today, if you had a chance, again, in the staff report, staff was concerned with the phasing plan that the applicant submitted with the application. Today, the applicant did provide staff with a revised phasing plan and layout for your consideration this evening. The notable change that you can see here is that we're going to get the Meridian Road frontage improvements with the fir, entire Meridian Road frontage improvements with the first phase, and then the applicant's also has been working with the developer on the east boundary to provide utility connections and a stub street, and so rather than having two strip streets on the east boundary, the applicant's in conjunction with Brighton Corporation on their east boundary is proposing only one stub street and then common driveways along the north and south boundary to provide those accesses. Plat that's proposed to you this evening is a little bit, it does exceed the open space standards of the UDC at 12.36% open space. In my staff report, we, staff was concerned that the primary open space was predominantly located along Meridian Road and the Collector Street, which is East Quartz Creek's Drive along, excuse me, East Quartz Creek Street along the south boundary, and so we wanted to have a little bit more open space that was central to the development so that we weren't having people recreate along the major roadways for these developments. Originally, staff's recommendation was the applicant to lose these two adjacent lots, which is Lot 7 and Lot 6 and Lot 7, and combine those into Lot 5. Again, the applicant is conceding to losing, providing a larger open space, really orientate more so that you can see it from all three sides of the street, and then that facilitates a bigger open space but also has greater visibility on there. So staff is amenable to the changes that the applicant's proposing to the revised phasing plan and the layout that's before you this evening. And you can also see in that exhibit, the connection of that Collector Street to Meridian Road along the south boundary, both the portion that he's expected to construct and the off-site portion. In the DA, we have required the applicant to construct the entire boundary or that constructor, the entire length of that collector Street with the first phase. Here's the open space exhibit, as I mentioned to you, the amenities proposed for the development consist of a tot lot, a gazebo, and then Meridian Road requires a 10-foot multi-use pathway within the 35-foot landscape buffer along that roadway, and the applicant, again, is going to construct that in its entirety with the first phase. The other unique thing about this proposed development is the applicant's also providing a variety of lot sizes within the development to provide housing diversity, and that's also the reason why staff is supportive of the request to the R8 zone. And here are the sample uses, or examples of the proposed elevations in the development. You can see there varying sizes, various architecture throughout the development, so there will be quite a diverse housing mix within the proposed development, even though they're all front-loaded garages, it's single-family detached homes. Staff did receive written testimony from Matt Schultz in agreement with most of the conditions of approval. I think with the exhibit that I showed you this evening, a lot of staff's conditions have been addressed, so as you can see with the revised phasing plan, the State Highway 69 improvements, that buffer along that roadway with the berm, the fencing, the landscaping and the 10-foot multi-use pathway will all be constructed with Phase 1 as recommended by staff. The applicant did reorient that open space, as I mentioned to you in my presentation, which is the exhibit on the right. Staff is amenable to that change, and then we are recommending, one other thing that I brought up in the staff report was the need for sidewalk to be extended along the Collector Road, along the off-site portion of the site. So, the UDC requires the applicant to do detached sidewalk on, on the portion of the Collector Road that he's required to construct as part of the development, but for the off-site portion, ACHD's only requiring a 30-foot wide street segment with three feet of gravel on each side and then the burrow ditches for drainage. So, we certainly want the, we want, we understand that these kids are going to go to Meridian School District. We want to make sure that wherever that bus stop location is, is in a safe location for kids to get to that school bus stop. So, it's by my experience that the, the school buses actually stop on Meridian Road to pick kids up at intersections of roadways rather than driving into the subdivisions. So staff was very concerned with how that would play out, and so we've actually asked the applicant to go speak with the school district and see, try to determine where the school bus stop will be for this particular development. If it is located at the intersection of the Collector Street at the mid-mile, then we certainly want the applicant to construct that five-foot sidewalk along the entire boundary of that Collector Street to get the students to the intersection, safely to that intersection rather than having them walk on just the paved roadway. So that is a recommended condition in the DA and the staff report. And I think that's the one that the applicant will, will work with the school district. He's amenable to it, but again, I left it flexible in the staff report that if the school district, if that's worth anticipating, do it. If it isn't, it doesn't apply and they don't need to comply with that. No sidewalk is required. And then I'd also mention to the commission that currently both our fire department, police department and ITD are restricting the access out of this development in, to a ride-in, ride-out, left-in only until such time as the ITD can complete their corridor study of State Highway 69. So, the state wants to study that to understand the, the access management for that highway and see, determine what the future right-of-way needs are going to be for that roadway. Right now, we have it pretty specific in the staff report that it's restricted to that use, but I think we should probably modify that condition this evening and give the applicant some flexibility that if this is a signalized intersection in the future, that it could be allowed to be a ride, a full access at some point in time. So, in your motion this evening, I would just ask that you include that as one of your motions, that it's ride-in, ride-out, left-in only until such time as ITD determines that it can be a full access and a signalized intersection. With that, the only written testimony that I received was from Matt Schultz, the applicant, again, in agreement with the conditions of the staff report with the modifications that I stated, and I conclude my presentation. Stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for staff? Or at least at this time? Mr. Schultz, would you like to come forward, sir?
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Schultz, 8421, South 10 Mile, Meridian, here on behalf of MWT LLC, they're the contract purchaser of the Percy Farms property, which Bill said was annexed as part of a mass annexation of, I believe, 40 properties four years ago. And it was brought to our attention that Mr. Percy might want to develop it. Our first inclination was, man, it's, it's close to the highway. You know, it gives you a little bit of pause, right? It's close, which is good, and it's close, which is bad sometimes because of the noise and the traffic and ITD, and it's kind of tough to work through that sometimes, and so we prefer not to be right on the highway. But, after looking at it, we love South Meridian, we think it's, it's a great piece of property if done right and if done well and if mitigated well with the proper buffers and access and all those things, which, which we, we believe we've addressed. We do agree with staff report. We have, since the staff report came out, updated the phasing plan, reworked that central area to open up into the three sides and make it a few thousand square feet bigger. It's a half, it's 20,000 square feet. It's, it's big, it's ample. It's not as big as our entry feature, which, which we do need to preserve, not only for a nice passive open space, but we have an irrigation pond we need to do there, an irrigation holding pond, we'll have a little fountain in it. And you're only allowed to do 25% of that area with the pond, the rest has to be open. So we really want to preserve that size. We think it's nice to have that size. It's more of a passive area, not a, go out and, I mean, you could throw a frisbee or do whatever out there, but that's, the kids are more likely to be around the playground in the middle, which is centrally located, connected with micro paths. It actually works out pretty well, the geometry of the site in that regard. We've done some other smaller R4 projects over the last few years in, in Meridian, 15 lots, 20 lots with a mix of builders, some good variety. We want to apply that here. We didn't say, hey, we want an R8 because we want to do all 4,000 square foot lots. Not that there's anything wrong with 4,000 square foot lots, because there's not, but in this location, at this spot, we thought we needed to do some transitional, larger lots on the east and on the south, and then some medium-sized, almost R4 but not quite in the middle, you know, some six to seven, almost 8,000 square foot, then meet the R4 widths, just not the depths, but they're still ample, and then transitioned some nice, I'm just going to plainly state, two-car garage, but single-story. A lot of people want it right now. It's still very nice, very expensive in South Meridian, but we wanted a mix of that two-car, three-car, 50, 60, 70. We're not going for high-density here. It's, it's a low-density R8, you know, at, at that four. It's, and we thought it was appropriate, whether we had to ask for a step-up or not, which we still can, but even in your new comp plan that you guys approved recently I hear, you have said that this would be medium-density. You've recommended that to council. Whether you did or not, we've still, we think it's appropriate, like Bill said, to slide that, that boundary down to that mid-mile. We think that's the good, that's the good breakpoint between the medium and the low, and we're, like I said, we're a low-density medium at that four to the acre. The bigger, the issues on here are access, which has been difficult. We've had great neighbors to work with, it's just, there's certain ways things need to go to accomplish access easements, like Bill said, and that's why we have the first time I've ever done a de-annexation strip. It's essentially adjusting that boundary four years ago that was annexed and say, yeah, we should have done that about 20 feet narrower and everything would have been good, because in exchange for granting that access easement, Matthias would like to retain an extra 20 feet. So, there's a process for doing that. We're doing it. It's a little cumbersome, but we're getting through it. We don't, we think it's a minor modification that doesn't adversely impact what the city wants to do and what we want to do long-term. Just right now, he'd like to stay in the county, RUT, until which time in the future, sometime, long-term, medium-term, we don't know yet, but right now or even the short-term, he's not interested in, in rezoning this whole property and developing. So in the meantime, there is an off-site access road that we're building to ACHD standards, which is a 30-foot wide pavement, half on each property owner, right at the mid-mile with a seven-foot bar ditch for drainage, at which time that the adjacent properties develop, they would do the full curb gutter sidewalk and widen that out. The only thing we disagree with, with Bill, but he did give me some wiggle room with the school district, was the requirement for the off-site sidewalk. I don't think they're going to require it, that they're going to pick up people right at that Meridian Road intersection, short, short or long-term. I think this is a mid-mile collector, they're going to come inside somewhere. If, if our kids do need to get out to Meridian Road, they can. We have a pathway connection out there just north of the intersection going out there. I mean, there's ways to get out there without going on that frontage and we just, we're constrained on our widths of what we can do along that mid-mile, and so we'll, we'll check with the school district, but I'm 99% sure they're not going to want to stop right there on Meridian Road and pick up kids, is what I'm thinking. They'd rather come in, do the loop, pick them up. And just to the east of us, I know Brighton is getting ready to submit a very large application that will continue that mid-mile all the way over to Locust Grove, and there will be a mid-mile connection out to Lake Hazel, another quarter mile past us. So there will be a grid, a mid-mile grid, a Collector Road through, through that section. We're doing our share of it, and we're the first ones in, so we get to pioneer some of these access issues and, and utility issues of bringing water from a quarter mile away down Meridian Road. The sewer is already through the site. It was put in, in conjunction with that mass annexation. A portion of the infrastructure to serve all those properties was installed, including through that east-west road on our north boundary. There is sewer all the way through that and actually goes under Meridian Road to the, to the west. So it's, it's eminently developable. It's the right time to do this. We think we have the right plan. We're not asking for a high-density R8, we're asking for a low-density to give some flexibility. So we still have some R4 lots underneath zoning, but it just gives us some, some flexibility in our, in our depths and widths to have a mix, and that, we thought that was important to get some good energy out there. So, to illustrate kind of the sizing, I think our average lot size is, it is 7,200 square feet, that's our average. Our minimum is 5,200 square feet, where 4,000 is allowed in an R8, and as far as the distribution of those lots, we only have 19% between 5,000 and 6,000. We have 81% are over 6, we have 53% over 7, and 24% are over 8,000 square feet, you know, of those 200. So it's skewed to the, to the, to the bigger lots within that R8 in that regard. Bill did point out that we did, Brighton called me after we had submitted this and said, hey, can we work with our stub streets on our east boundary? I said, sure, just don't slow me down. We'll work with you. So it's a real, we see this very binary revision, those two stub streets get converted to common driveways, and then we just add a stub street where it works better for their geometry, and ACHD has approved the single, the single stub in their staff report, because I brought it to their attention as they were writing the staff report, and so they've, they've put that in there that they would, they would accept one even though our official plumeray plat doesn't show it right now, and we'd like that to be a condition of the final plating as we have it. But, we think it's the right place and the right time. We have a big, beautiful, big, beautiful wall, berm. We've actually doubled the, almost doubled the required trees and shrubs from your minimums on, on that buffer. We made sure our landscape architect, after Bill pointed out, hey, you might want to do something else. I'm like, yeah, we look at that. We, we don't want to go minimums, we want to do more, so I kind of instructed our landscape architect to go back and bump that up, and we actually have 35 feet, we have a 10-foot, we have a 35-foot landscape buffer, there's a 10-foot sidewalk in that to the right-of-way, then we're also going to do 10 feet of landscaping within the right-of-way. So we have, actually have a 45-foot landscape buffer where 35 is required. So we want to do something nice on the entryway corridor coming in from the south. I mean, we won't be the last, the first one in over time, but we are now, you know, we will be the next first one in coming from the south, so we want to do something that everybody can be proud of and say, yeah, that looks nice. And the fence along there won't be your standard, you know, vinyl, nothing wrong with vinyl, but it's, but, you know, $20 a square, $20 a foot standard, it's going to be redtail and cabin, or cabin's building it right now, but redtail's already done, and it's more of a stamped composite, concrete pillars, it's more of a composite look to it that's, you know, probably three times as much cost, that does deafen the sound, but the berm being up as well will, will be a sound barrier. And staff, or your code requires a 10-foot total, four-foot berm, six-foot fence wall. We're going to recreate that, even though it falls off right now, because as it comes up the hill there, we're going to lift all that up, and so it'll be a consistent berm all the way along there that you'll see instead of looking down on that field. So it's going to, it's going to change the look and the feel of that for the positive, I think. So, hopefully you concur with staff's recommendation for approval. I know we do, and I'll stand for any, any questions.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McGarville.
Matt, could you tell us what, he said tot lot on, is that the area in the middle?
In the middle.
And then what goes on that back northeast corner?
Yes. Yes. Chair and Commissioner McCarville, it's really elevated. The highway is really elevated up there. It's probably 12 to 14 feet above the site. That is a secondary emergency access.
No, 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 east, not west. But within the subdivision.
There is drainage and open space, excuse me. Yeah, it's open space. There's nothing, there's no, there's no amenity in that one. There is a central amenity of a playground. We have a gazebo in the front. I probably want to move it on the other side of the pond in the final iteration, but it's in that front area, and this is kind of a central, it'll be underground seepage. It won't be a pond. It'll be flat with.
I guess I like the passive open space on the entry to the, you know, I'm just saying, I mean, being along the busy road is, I mean, something more amenity-wise within there, I guess, because since there's nothing marked.
On the front, on the front, on the mid-mile, on the south, on that big one as you come in?
Yeah, I like that. I'm all for more water in that passive area up there, but I'm thinking within it, it'd be nice to have something more than tot lot. Just, so I was just curious what the plan was there, but it is just green space.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioner, we, as we do our preliminary layouts, we know the ground slopes all down to that way. We kind of reserve ample area. ACHD requires some really large facilities for drainage, you know, and sometimes people do pond, depressed retention ponds, sometimes they do beds. We have some subsurface conditions, fortunately, because I prefer, if you can be out of sight, out of mind, it's grass, it's open space, you can go walk your dog, you can play catch, but they don't allow you to plant your trees in the middle of it where that facility is underground. You can put shrubs on the outside and trees on the outside, but the center's grass, and they like to keep it that way just for, in case they have to go in and deal with it later if it ever clogs up in 20 years or something. But it's a big underground gravel drainage bed, covered with landscaping is what it is.
Is there no questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cassinelli.
It looked like I was going to ask.
You were going for your button.
And this might be for Bill, too. What are the minimum number of amenities? Is it just two?
Yeah, Commissioners, yeah, the minimum is first five acres you do one and then additional 20 acres after that is another. So as I said, we, code only requires, and Matt's doing three at this point, so he's in excess of both open space and amenities at this point.
Additional questions? Matt, thank you for, I think we'll see if there's public testimony, and we'll bring you back if there's additional questions. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One person signed up, Ron Galloway.
Mr. Galloway, don't need to testify. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir, please come forward. Please state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
Carl Reiterman. I live at 2697 South Linda Road. I own the property directly north of this, and my question or concern is the little stub street that comes up on the north side, will that have sewer and water in it? Because right now, my property has no sewer and water connected to it. It's also in the county, which we were not annexed, and I don't understand why we weren't, but we weren't.
And usually when we're on stub streets, we're stubbing other things, so I'll let the applicant respond to that, or Bill, if you want to talk about that, we can have him respond when he comes back up, sir. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience want to testify on this application? Matt, do you want to come back up and close your thoughts and answer this gentleman's question if you can?
Yeah, Matt Schultz, thanks, thanks for the neighbor for showing up to the north. We've wondered what his intents were, but he is, he is zoned. I know it's been tried to be sold for many stores, potentially it's zoned, I think, BC in the county, but definitely all these stub streets have utilities in them. The sewer's really close to his property. It's about 120 feet away in our road, so we'll provide a stub from the existing one to his boundary. It's sloped down, it'll work great, water and sewer, and there may be a potential in the future on the irrigation, depending on how that develops, but it's pretty standard for us.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Cassinelli.
Kind of follow-up to Commissioner McCarville's. The, I guess that's the southeast corner where you got the emergency access going out. Did you look at, and you're kind of describing some of the slopage in there, but is it possible to maybe put another, get another lot in there or something and move some of that, move some of the more green space internal?
Chairman and Commissioner Cassinelli, we left that big like that because as that road comes down, it's a 20-foot wide fire access that can double as a pedestrian, but it'll be going at about maximum 10%, but it'll have these side slopes coming down off of it. So we wanted to leave that area bigger to have sloped grass, to not be too pinched in that area. So when we looked at the topography and the third dimension on this, which was, which is not apparent, you know, just looking at this, it's not, we felt that that was the right space to leave for that. We didn't really put it there for open space, per se. We put it there for that access road and left it ample for the grades and everything else. And then at that entryway, we, that's kind of what was left over, and we liked it big as, not only as a passive area, open space, but just as a, as a big, open feel as you drive in, just as an entry feature, per se, you know, as you drive in and make it look bigger with some R4 lots backing up to it. And then the central area, I think by reorienting it like we did, is really going to open it up. It did increase some, you know, a couple thousand square feet, which isn't huge, but it really makes, it's going to make it feel so much more open, having it open on three sides. And we just made that change here recently. We thought that was a good idea. So as far as adding more open space and losing lots, trading lots would be cool, you know, I mean, that's okay if we thought we had an area to do it. We're just not seeing a place to trade lots other than that front area, and we actually went through that iteration of maybe losing two lots in the middle and maybe gaining two lots in the front, but still having some for the pond. And two issues pop up, because the lots are so deep, it's inefficient, actually lose, it's a net loss of open space, even though it's even lot swap, it's a net loss of open space. And two, we're kind of pinched on the, which I didn't even know till, till it was pointed out to me, that ponds can only be 25% of that area, and so we're still going through the final engineering of what that size of that pond needs to be, but we feel like we, we like it for three different reasons at the front of that area. So we really think besides this extra area, which seems to be kind of unused for the drainage part, I think it's pretty well-programmed for everything we need to do, especially with the micro paths connecting everything together. So that's my long explanation. I'm sorry.
But I guess on that, that one, the area where that access road is going out, out to Meridian Road, it's because of the topography there?
Topography, for sure, yeah. It is. I mean, it's probably 12 to 14 feet higher than the top is from the bottom, and so with the two-to-one side slope, it could come out about 30 feet more from the, from the top of that road to the bottom of it, and so that'll be a gentle slope, but it's just no, to get another lot in there is problematic because of the third dimension.
Is there no question?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to close public hearing on H2019-0097?
So moved.
A motion and second to close public hearing on file number H2019-0097. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same? It is properly before you, Commissioners. Commissioner Cassinelli.
Well, as far as, kind of go down the checklist, I, the density, I think it's, I'm good with the density and the way it transitions. Obviously, I think if you're trying to put, you know, R4 lots up against Meridian Road, they're just, they're not going to, probably not going to sell. I mean, they might. There's areas where you can look at Eagle Road to the, you know, to the north down into Eagle against, you know, against some of the, and along Chinon and whatnot, but I think for the most part, that's a good, good use of that, putting smaller, smaller homes in there. So I'm great with that. When I looked at it, I saw the issue of that corner that I was, that I addressed, and I, you know, understand the topography. I would, I guess, you know, if there was a way to get a little bit more internal green space, I would like to see it, but I think they've probably done that, and I was thinking, my first thought was, you know, swap a lot into that corner, but it really can't be done. Perhaps like to see him look at some different amenities other than the tot lot and the gazebo, something that maybe fit, because these are, I'm guessing these might be a little bit higher-end homes. I'm not entirely sure, but something that would, would fit that a little, little bit better, maybe a little bit more established community, so to speak. I think other than that, it's a, it fits as it, as it goes from Meridian Road on the east to the west there with the lots getting larger, and it sounds like they've, they've talked with Brighton, they're going to, you know, lots along the western side are going to line up to their lots, so.
No, I agree. I appreciate the applicant ensuring there's, that they're working with their neighbors to the north end, to the east. Gentleman's getting his, the stub street to sewer and water and going to the north, and I know Brighton appreciates being able to orient the road that makes sense for them. I, I'm okay with the, the micro paths and how that plays into the middle section and the green space there. I know Woodbridge had something similar to that when I lived there, and it kind of fed everybody into that green space that was a walkable area. And then those, the, what's a drainage area is, it's underneath landscaping, so you have kids that they're playing football and that, so I don't have a problem with that either. But I understand what you're talking about, on possibly mature components, but with the smaller homes to, on the long Meridian Road, I don't mind having a tot lot there either. So it's kind of a balancing act. I think they've done a good job with what they're working with topography-wise as well. Commissioner McCarville.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the passive areas in the northwest and the southeast, I like, and I'm, if, just my two cents, if they can have more than 25% be that pond, I think it'd probably be really pretty. Yeah, and the inner ones, I was just wondering if there was any, you know, opportunity to do something on that other small little space in there, but I do like the reorientation of it. It just feels better. And of course, I mean, would the stub streets go into the east over there to the future project? If that's the way they've melded those together, that's, I think that's fine. I think to the gentleman's point, I believe he asked why they weren't annexed. I think it's, the city of Meridian just doesn't come annexed, you just need to request it. Yeah, I'm in favor. I agree, the density, especially along Meridian Road. I think this is a nice blend, especially knowing you got Chafer Butte and another one coming on the other side, I think is just fine.
I like the mix of products with the different lot sizes, so. Commissioner Seal.
Mr. Chair, just clarification, Bill, on the open space. I mean, with the modifications they've made in the revision that they've submitted, is that, does that comply with what staff wanted within the report? It doesn't, as I'm reading back through it, it doesn't seem like it, but I just want to make sure, so if we throw a motion out there that we've, it seems like it's amenable, but I want to make sure that we have that in the, in the motion.
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner. I had some comments on how you should probably guide you in your motion this evening, certainly when, with the reduction of the stub street and an addition of the common driveways, we don't have conditions to address that. So certainly what we've done, I don't want to hold up the applicant this evening either, there's no need to, but typically what we've done is just have them provide us a revised plan 10 days prior to the city council hearing, and then that way we can prepare a memo for council and have them incorporate some additional conditions that coincide with the changes to the plat. Certainly, I'm open to that this evening, so I would just include in your mo, I think we should strike some conditions for sure. I was looking at those, at that staff report, so if, again, if the commission is open to the open space changes, certainly my recommendation was to lose two lots and have a bigger open space. Now, what he's done isn't commensurate to what I've asked him to do, but I think having it opened from three sides does make it at least more visible and more usable than the way it was before, so I'm okay with, with that change.
And he did, he did take some of the space away from the other lots that were in there, so he didn't.
He did, and shrunk those lots a little bit, and that's something that he and I discussed. So certainly if you're open to that, you can strike condition 2A in the staff report. It's site-specific in 2A under the preliminary plat, and then under the landscape plan, it's 3A.
Thank you, Bill. One other question, I think we need to, can you point out specifically, and I can't remember which point it is, on the road section and the flexibility we're giving them to discuss options with the school district, which specific point is that? I couldn't find it when I was looking back a second ago.
Well, currently, the way the DA reads, it says, construct a five-foot sidewalk along the entire length of East Quartz Creek Street. Then it goes on to say, if the school district doesn't require a stop along that roadway at that intersection, then it won't be required for the off-site portion of the roadway, but he still has to do it for the portion, his onsite.
Absolutely.
And so that's actually DA provision 2C.
Thank you, sir. And then we have the right-in, right-out discussion as well.
We had a question on that.
Mr. Seal, go right ahead, sir.
If you could just restate what you had stated previously. I wrote some notes, but now I'm looking at them going, what did I mean?
Well, currently, it's in the staff report under preliminary plat condition, actually, let's see here, 2D. It specifies that it's right-in, right-out, left-in only, and then comply with ITD mitigation measures as described in the, in the traffic study. But I can see at some point, when there's enough traffic and there's a warrant for signal there, that at some point it would be open to a full access, because now we have a control to signalize intersection. So I think, I think we could just leave it until such time as the intersection is signalized or determined meets ITD, or ITD completes its corridor study and deems that it can be, it will be warned, signaled, and be improved to a full access. But I think it's, to me, I would just leave it open until ITD completes the.
Corridor study.
Corridor study. And they determine what the future needs are for that.
Bill, did you say in the staff report, it is already stated properly for, to work with the school district, or do we need to change that wording? Because I think we're all in agreement that, that needs.
Yeah, the way it's worded, it says if West, West A, that school district doesn't, does not require a school bus stop at the intersection of Meridian Road and East Quartz Creek Street, the five-foot wide detached sidewalk is not required to be constructed along the off-site portion of the roadway.
So it's, so we don't need to make any other comments?
Leave it as is. If the applicant can get with Joe Yocum before city council, we can take it up then.
Got it. Perfect. Any additional questions for staff? Additional comments? Somebody want to take a shot at where we're headed?
I can try this one.
Commissioner Seal, go right ahead, sir.
After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to the city council file number H2019-0097. It's presented by the staff report for the hearing date of November 7, 2019, with the following modifications, that we strike conditions 2A and 3A and accept the revisions submitted by the applicant. And we modify condition 2D that the right-in, right-out, and left-only remains until ITD completes its corridor study.
Authorizes a signal.
Authorizes a signal.
A second.
I have a motion.
Yeah.
Any clarification needed?
Just one clarification, just include in your motion that 10 days prior to the city council hearing, they submit the revised plat and landscape plan consistent with exhibit on the left-hand side of your screen, oh, excuse me, the right-hand side.
Second, including Bill's comments.
I have a motion and a second. Does staff understand what the motion is, or do we need to have it re-stated? We're good? Okay.
Because you've got the 2A, and then the landscape was the 3, it was the landscape 3A, right? Okay. Got it.
Bill, did you, was there one other one? You mentioned a. You mentioned a 2C. Was that what-
That was the school-
That one's already stated in there properly.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second to, for approval of file H-2019-0097 with modifications. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same? Motion passes. Thank you. Schultz, appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our last item on our agenda. We have, we'll move forward to open the public hearing on H-2019-0107, the street length for cul-de-sacs UDC text amendment. And, Bill?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Last item on our agenda this evening is the UDC text amendment to modify our cul-de-sac lengths requirements of our subdivision standards in the UDC. This is not a staff-initiated request, this actually came forward from a developer of a project for the Silver Springs development that you guys recently approved. There was an extended cul-de-sac length that did not meet current code, which is 400 feet. As he went through that hearing process and took those deliberation, that application up with city council, both applicant, staff, city council kind of struggled with what we should do with it. You know, as you know, council cannot waive code requirements, and so essentially, the applicant took it upon themselves to come forward with this amendment, understanding that it does affect all properties citywide. And so the applicant, as part of their application submitted, they were given homework. We asked them to actually go out and look at all the other jurisdictions in our surrounding areas to see what they approve. And like anything, every code varies anywhere you go. And I just want to give Caleb some kudos too, because he's the one that really ran with this, and he looked even, took either a broader cast, casted a broader net and looked nationwide for what other cities were doing. And that's why you kind of see staffs recommend changes before you on this exhibit. So originally, the applicant was proposing 500 feet, and then allow some flexibility for city council to approve up to 750 feet. And really, that 750 feet came down to, that's what ACHD policies allow, up to a 750-foot cul-de-sac, and also our fire department, or their fire code allows up to a 750-foot cul-de-sac. Well, we as staff, before we agreed to going over that 500-foot, or even increasing our cul-de-sac lengths from 500, from 450 to 500, we wanted to understand, again, what's happening in the area. And so 500 feet seems to be pretty consistent with local jurisdictions in the area. And so as I mentioned, Caleb went out and took that broader net and looked and said, what are other areas doing? So we think we have a workable solution here, so we went ahead and the black text above you is what the applicant was proposing. We came in with these changes, we allow up to 500 feet, we think that is pretty consistent with the area, so we're amenable to that change. But we want to also give the development community flexibility in going up to 750 feet, but holding them to a maximum number of dwelling units. And that number landed, that we landed on was 20, and that seemed to be somewhat of a consistent number throughout the nation, that yeah, we'll let you go up to a certain extent, but we'll cap you at the number of units that could take access off the extended cul-de-sac. Also, mentioned to you here, we also wanted to give flexibility in case there aren't any other stub streets to the property, or there's some kind of topography issues, or irrigation facility that prohibits the extension of the roadway too, and that's pretty consistent with other section of our code for our block length standards. And then we also wanted to define how to measure the length of the cul-de-sac, because again, it's arbitrary, it wasn't well-defined in the code. And so, again, Caleb put a lot of this information together for you, just to take under consideration this evening. And we did have conversations with the applicant, and I believe they were in agreement with the changes as well. Just to put some, the text to a graphic, certainly here's an exhibit that we put together, this represents exactly what we have, what I just presented to you in the code change, in a situation where there may be an example of a 750-foot cul-de-sac where there is no adjacent connectivity with adjacent property. So you can see it's limited to 20 homes on that, and then there would be pet connections into the adjacent subdivisions. That would be one of the goals that we would get. Now, I would mention to the commission that it's not the intent of staff to support 750 cul-de-sacs throughout the city. Again, we always want to promote interconnectivity where we can, and provide stub streets, and promote shorter block length. So this isn't just a tool that we want to use haphazardly and just approve all these long cul-de-sacs. Again, we have plenty of policies in the comprehensive plan that speaks to interconnectivity and stub streets, but we want to, we understand there are circumstances out there where this may not be possible, and that's why we're here this evening. Caleb also did a quick review of other cul-de-sacs in our community, and he communicated to me that, based on his research and survey of area photos of our city, there's only actually three cul-de-sacs in all of Meridian that have more than 20 homes that access off a cul-de-sac. And those numbers were like two or three lots above the 20. So again, staff is pretty comfortable with that, limiting the number of homes off of that cul-de-sac to 20. Here's some alternatives, again, as I mentioned to you, we don't want to encourage cul-de-sacs. The idea is to work with developers and property owners to find solutions to do that. So an example of one is where we could have cul-de-sacs, and an example of where the developer could connect the streets, and essentially have the same number of lots and not impact the development at all. And then, as I mentioned to you, we also took it upon ourselves to work on a section of that Silver Springs project where we had struggled with that cul-de-sac length. And so, the graphic in the upper left-hand corner is what was approved with the cul-de-sac contingent upon this text amendment. And then as you head to the right-hand screens, you can see where there's other ways they could have redesigned it and still kept generally the same lot count. They would only lost a lot with the middle, the better version of the graphic, and the best option, they would have lost two lots. But there are ways to mitigate around cul-de-sacs and making projects work. So just wanted to go on record and give you some options as well. And certainly, in your motion, if you feel like we should add graphics to our code to kind of represent those text changes, you can include that in your motion as well this evening to include something, this graphic, and so we can incorporate as well, incorporate this graphic in accordance with the text changes as well. Other than that, again, we've been in communications with the applicant the whole time on the proposed changes. I know Mr. Jorgensen had a conversation with Caleb this afternoon. I'm not sure if he's proposing any changes this evening or not. I'll let him speak to those, but staff is recommending approval of the text changes with the recommended changes in the yellow text before you. I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I noticed that the fire department hadn't had a chance to respond to this. I just was, I'm curious as to their thoughts on it, and even looking at the graphics, I'm thinking about something going down, especially the long straight cul-de-sac area here. If that's 750 feet long, and we got to get, you know, four or five fire trucks in there to fight a fire, that seems like it could cause quite an issue.
Look, Commissioner, I'm not a fire expert, but I've dealt with this and had many meetings with the fire department. So yes, their code allows for 750 feet, contingent upon wider road. So right now, I know ACHD's policies, they've shifted their direction a little bit over there, they want narrower local streets. So in this particular case, I believe, in working with the previous fire marshal, a cul-de-sac of this length would have to be 36 feet of pavement, as well, 36 feet of wide, between the curb and the two curbs, you have to have 36 feet of asphalt. So that's what's going to drive the width of the cul-de-sac, is the fire code. So just wider road for them to get down that roadway faster.
Okay.
And not have obstructions.
Great, thank you.
And, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, would they allow in fire code 30 houses on a cul-de-sac section, correct?
Yeah, yeah, on a single access, up to 30 single-family homes can be on a roadway, correct?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Castanelli.
Bill, can, right now, the way it stands, can they not extend a cul-de-sac through alternative compliance?
Commissioners, that is not an option at this time. The code is very black and white on this particular case, as we found out at the city council, we cannot waive that. It says no cul-de-sac shall be greater than 450 feet in length. That's the maximum. Then there, again, the expectation is you design, you design around it, just like we've shown in these graphics. There's ways to do it. It's just, you have to pencil to paper and make it work.
Yeah. Is that an option, is to, is to keep it, keep the lengths as is and-
Commissioners, yeah, if you don't agree with changing the code, that's your recommending body. If you don't like to propose changes, you're more than welcome to recommend denial of this application.
But I mean, is that an option as far as getting alternative compliance to?
As in the future?
Yeah. So keep it, keep the lengths as is, but allow alternative compliance to, or is that more of a headache?
Well, I'd say that puts a ton of pressure on staff to figure out, instead of having the applicant do it for them. I mean, that's bring in what you want, and then work with the staff to come up with a rate.
There's pros and cons to all of it, to be honest with you, because alternative compliance, it is essentially a staff-level variance, and it's, it's on a case-by-case basis, so that you have, at least you have the ability to say no at some point with it. Where this is code, this is citywide, so everyone, if they comply with this, essentially, you're shifting the burden to staff versus shifting the burden to city council. So that's kind of the pros and cons here to it. But certainly with annexations and with some of the policies in the comprehensive plan, if staff doesn't feel that the extended cul-de-sac is the right fit, we can certainly recommend modifications and/or denial of their annexation. We have that ability, but again, what we're proposing this evening, I think, is a good alternative. We talked about it, we've been working with everyone out there, and I think this works for everyone. Again, the intent isn't to have 750-
Everybody having-
750 linear foot cul-de-sacs throughout the city of Meridian, we still need connectivity.
Well, and the 500, that's only 50 more feet, but I mean, giving the city council the ability to shift in within that 50, 500 to 750, I think is reasonable.
Certainly, you guys will be able to weigh in on that as part of your recommendation on the city council. I don't want to just say, okay, kick it on down to council and let them decide on it. I mean, ultimately, they're going to decide what. You have the ability to say yes, whether or not you support the long cul-de-sac and forward on that information on the city council with your recommendation.
And then, Bill, another question. What, right now, what is the maximum block length? So I can have a kind of perspective.
Well, the code right now restricts block length to 750 feet. And then council can go up, you can go up to 1,000 feet with pet connection or open space or an alley. There's certain guidelines, and then the council can prove up to 1,200 linear feet when you have large waterways, arterial roadways, topography, some of the same similar language that you see with this text change.
Okay. So the 750-foot cul-de-sac could be as long, just from my perspective, that could be as long as a, as a standard maximum block length right now?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Would the applicant like to come forward? Or are we, we, do we do have an applicant?
That's us.
Want to come forward and discuss with us? We're going back and forth with staff, but thanks for being here.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Dean Waite, 4283 Nice Stromway, Boise, Idaho, 83713. I do appreciate your time today, and I'll throw away my notes, and won't make this a long speech. Do appreciate Bill and the rest of the staff helping us with this. The one point I do want to make is that during our presentation and the work with city council and with the staff on Silver Springs, in the city council meeting, we were directly asked by the city council to make this proposal. They, they wanted, they wanted to approve this, as Bill stated, but they could not. Their hands were tied in talking with staff and with the council, they could not do what they wanted to do. And so, we went through, did the homework, checked with the other local jurisdictions, which are between 500 and like Boise and ACHD up to 750, and tried to find something that we thought worked. And so, here we are today. And we were, yeah, we are okay with the changes that the staff has recommended to what we proposed.
Perfect. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much for being here, we appreciate it. Mr. Jorgensen, do you want to come and testify since you're alone in the room?
Thank you, for the record, Dave Jorgensen, 14254 West Pattonburg Drive Boise. And just a couple things. First of all, again, thank you, staff. Appreciate all the work you've done and the research you've done, and that's exactly right, as I stood and testified to the city council. They asked us to come back with an application, which is what was done. Lots of discussion with fire chief to make sure it was compatible with what they wanted and be consistent with the other cities. I got a copy of the staff report a couple hours ago, so I was happy to do a quick little peruse to it. And additionally, I also wear the hat of the Building Contractors Association, and the BCA has not had a chance to review this and make a formal position, though I have talked to a couple developers, and I look at my experience developing in the city here as well as the other surrounding cities. And really, the only question that will come up is the number of units being restricted to 20 on the streets. I don't want to make that a big deal tonight. I think it's really important for them to keep moving forward with their final plat and their construction drawings for their development. However, I do know that I did a quick little sketch, if I were to do it, not a 750, but a 500-foot-long cul-de-sac, not in an R-15, but in our eight zone with the standard lot sizes that are in the R-eight zone, I actually come up with 29 lots. So, 29. So the 30 lots that Commissioner Fitzgerald referred to as that would be restricted based on the, the single access, if we'd have a lot of discussion about that, we would appreciate that. I know to raise that number from 20 to 30, but I'm not here to make a big deal out of that as well. I haven't put a whole lot of, our association, the BCA has not actually made a formal statement on that. What's really more important is to have this application move forward, so they can keep moving forward with their construction drawings. Lastly, the city made the condition or the requirement that they will file their final plat application after whatever's approved by the city council of this modification to the code change. Commissioner Castanelli, I appreciate your comments with regard to alternative compliance. I love that idea, this is what was directed by the council, and I also appreciate why, meaning don't put the pressure on staff to be arbitrary with the decisions, but let's be consistent with across the city. And so this bump up from 450 to 500 makes a lot of sense. So with that, I appreciate the comments, I approve what's being recommended here, and I'll just stand for any of the questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you so very much for being here. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks again.
Absolutely. Any questions for staff for closed public hearing? No? I get a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I move to close public hearing for file number H-2019-0107.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H-2019-0107. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion passes. Commissioner McCarville.
I would be in favor of moving forward with this. I would like to include the graphics with the text changes. I think those pictures say a thousand words. I would not, I don't think I would want to entertain moving that from 20 to 30 lots. I think that's, I mean, if, just fire everything, I think there's other ways to do a street with that much density. I don't think it needs to be down a cul-de-sac. My two cents.
Additional comments, thoughts? So I, I have no, I think as council is going to see this again when we, I think they, if they want to take it to the 30 and match the fire code, they can do that. I want to allow the applicant to move forward as well, and I have no problem with the changes. I think it, it makes sense, again, it gives council a leeway to approve, based on design and uniqueness of topography or other things, to approve a larger block length if they need to, but I think this makes sense.
Agreed.
So, someone want to make a motion?
Sure.
Commissioner Seal.
After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval of the city council file number H-2019-0107, as amended by staff in the staff report for the hearing date of November 7, 2019.
Are you going to add the graphics?
With the, with the following modifications, that we include the graphics with the text changes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve, or recommend approval of file H-2019-0107, street length for cul-de-sac UDC text amendment, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate you being here. I need- I need one more motion.
Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yay! We live.